Can we have the, uh, Rob, can we have the pledge of, uh, pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir. If everyone will please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Rob, thank you. Uh, Jared, looks like it's time for a roll call.
Yes, sir. Barb Barker. Tammy Blank.
Here.
Cindy Broad.
Here.
Julia, it's Marquis Cucaro. Tom Harley.
Here.
Mr. Kerr.
Present.
Mrs. Leeper.
Present.
Mrs. Lowry.
Present.
Mr. Schroed.
Here. Okay. Um, thank you for that, Jared. Um, I'd like to welcome everybody this evening, uh, to another virtual meeting, hopefully with the vaccine and with some improvement. Uh, we'll be able to get back at some point in time here to having our meetings in person. But until then, uh, we're doing it virtually and I thank you for your patience and understanding for, for participating, uh, tonight. I have no board president message. Is there any public comment, Jared?
No, sir.
Okay, no public comment. Is there anybody from IAEA, ASME, SGA, or STUKA for your reports, please? Nothing heard. Mike, it looks like it's your turn for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. My report's available on the district website under About Us Superintendent section. There's two things I'd like to call out. Number one, this week is National Public Schools Week and we've been releasing some information on our social media to our families about the part, you know, about public schools and how well they're doing, uh, and we'll continue to do that throughout the remainder of the week. And the second thing, sir, just like to take a moment to, uh, inform the, the board that CDC last week released some updates regarding their requirements and recommendations for school opening. And I'm glad to say that the district is in alignment with all of them. In fact, we have been from day one. The only really thing, things they really did is three things, in my opinion. Um, one, they talked about they changed the language from where masks were recommended to be worn to now be required. Uh, Department of Health, as you know, the governor already enacted that. Uh, so we've been doing that since day one. They also then, um, explained about the six feet of social distancing, uh, or to the greatest extent possible and as well as cohorting in small groups. Again, that's what we're doing when you look at our hybrid model. So I'm pleased to say that our work has put us in a position where we're able to stay open, avoid longer shutdowns. I think the one thing no one has a question for, and I wish there were some sort of an idea, uh, behind, was when the vaccines would be available to staff so we can fully reopen. Um, I know that's one thing that this board values and desires and wants. I just, I can't tell you with any certainty, sir, when those vaccines will be made available to our staff. Uh, I know this, we are working in, uh, conjunction, collaboration with our local, um, 911 emergency response team, IU and everyone else that else we need to be in communication with. And right now there seems to be no, um, no real plan, uh, coming out this time as far as the timetable for us. When we can expect it, we are expecting it in February. Now we're going to hope for March or April, but we're going to stay patient, wait our turn. And I just want to applaud the families and the staff and the students for everyone doing the part to help avoid and mitigate the breakouts. And I think that's shown in the most recent results of, as of last week, ending on the 16th, I believe, or the 18th of February. Um, Indiana County now went down below the 5% mark on, uh, percent positivity rates on, on coronavirus tests. So that's a big step in the right direction, looking at what, only a couple of months ago, we were at 49%, I believe the number was. So you've seen a huge shift, a huge downside, and that's because of everyone's hard work. And I'm appreciative of that in, in this county and proud to be a part of that community. So that's all I have tonight, sir, and looking forward to meeting.
Okay, thank, thank you, uh, Mike. I don't think, um, uh, Mr. Raypack is with us this evening, uh, so it looks like we're down to the next section. And we don't have any presentations scheduled for tonight. Uh, may I have a motion to approve our minutes and agenda for this evening?
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And any questions, comments, or discussion? We'll vote on this in the negative. If anybody objects to approving either a 3.1 or 3.2, please say no or nay at this point. Nothing heard. The chair assumes that the motion carries unanimously. Uh, Indiana County Technology Center, Uta, do you have a report for us tonight?
I do. Um, we met on January the 26th. Um, we got a business office update that the business manager who had been out on leave, um, is returning to her position. Um, we had preliminary conversations about the budget. Um, the NOCTI testing will take place April 1st through 15th for the written part and the, um, actual demonstration part will be April the 30th. Um, ICTC has created a video showcasing each of their programs since they can't have their, um, tours and, uh, programs that they normally have for our high school students. And, um, they're trying to figure out how to do that, um, and maybe provide shadow experiences for students who are interested in attending the ICTC. Um, they received supplemental funding under the Coronavirus Response and Relief Appropriations Act. And, um, they had some building project updates. The, um, Conservation District Building is occupied and they are going through final punch list items. And the WCCC Challenger Project is, um, going underway and, um, making progress towards, um, a construction time in the near future.
Okay, Uta, thank you. Um, Barb's not here tonight. Mike, is there anything from Aaron? Uh, I know we've got, uh, take a look at their budget later on, but is there anything from Aaron other than that?
No, sir, there's not.
Okay, Tom, academic and extracurricular.
Uh, had no meeting, uh, I have one coming up.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Uh, Policy and Personnel Committee, Uta, it looks like you have another report for us.
I was actually not able to be at that meeting, so, um, I'm hoping that, um, Mr. Vukovich or, um, Cindy can help me out here on the report.
Maybe Mike can do that because I don't have a copy of the minutes here to go over quickly.
No, a- absolutely, Miss Cindy, and thank you for opportunity. Um, we went over a couple of things that night. In, in particular, one thing we discussed about with a reading specialist as being serving in the role of literacy interns. That was a big part of our discussion about how we could further support what we're doing in the area of, um, literacy and how we're supporting those folks. We also talked about the long-term substitutes in the third grade position. And then we also looked at staffing. The committee approved and the board subsequently later, um, authorized the administration to post advertised interview for two science positions at the high school. We also went through some policies and did the first reading on facilities and workspace safety and trauma form approach. And we also talked about driver's education, how we're going to move forward by offering that. And then we had discussion about some additional staffing needs that we're not ready to act upon, but we wanted to have a conversation with the committee on. And lastly, uh, we talked about tax collector compensation as well during that meeting. So it was a very well meaning, uh, very well ran meeting by Miss Cindy. So good as you, Miss Cindy, for running us, keeping us on task. And we got a lot done, sir, and that's our report.
Okay, um, uh, Uta, do you want to go ahead and take the motions? She may be having some difficulty with her, uh, oh, there she is.
I'm having technology issues. I apologize. Um, can we scroll up a little bit, um, so we can take, um, I'd like to take all the items, um, as, as present items at once unless somebody wants to pull one of them out.
I believe, Mr. President, I believe she asked for to take all items at once unless there's anyone who'd like to pull something off.
Um, you know, let's, um, that's okay with me. Um, go ahead with the, uh, go ahead with the motions, Uta.
Okay, um, I'd like us to approve this, the substitute list, the long-term substitute assignment, the employment of support staff, the sabbatical leave, and approval of Board Policy 146 and 705.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to, uh, do 62 through 6, 6. Um, are there any questions, comments, or discussion on any of those, um, on any of those items? Nothing heard. Again, we'll vote in the negative. If, um, anybody objects to, uh, any of those motions, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard. The chair assumes that it passed unanimously. Okay, Terry, Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation.
Yeah, thank you, Walter. We did have a meeting last Monday, February 15th. First topic of discussion was the East Pike Roof Replacement, uh, Update. A ESCO consultant constellation presented to the committee, uh, some estimates and the type of roof that they suggest for that. Then we moved on to the Eisenhower, uh, Architect Presentation from Buchard Horn or, or Architect of Record. They went through a first draft of some ideas for, uh, making some upgrades and such at the Eisenhower, uh, building as far as possibly replacing or removing those modular classrooms that are deteriorated and past their life, uh, span, uh, making some other changes throughout the building. We asked the architect to come back with some more options, uh, for us. We then heard, uh, from a couple of staff members at the junior high, uh, for the upgrade of the sound system there. They had received a donation from Dr. Jill Ehrman, uh, along with, there was money already set aside on our, uh, in our budget for some upgrades to the audio system there. And then we also heard from the senior high too, that they are having similar equipment, uh, issues. So they, uh, also, there was money set aside for those improvements too in our budget. So I think those things are on our agenda for tonight. Uh, we heard an update on the East Pike Entrance Way. It's very near to completion. We did receive a certificate of occupancy. Uh, they, they found that there was a need, some, for some new furniture for that new addition, so. Then we talked a little bit about the HBAC systems again. They need a point bipolarization. We had asked for some additional information there and some peer reviews, sites that we could look at or articles. And we heard a busing update from Mr. Travis, you know, and then he reported on there had been a bus, recent bus accident. So that's all I have for that, Walter. I'll move on to my, uh, items. Does anybody want any of these separated or can I make them all at once? Not hearing anything. We have 7.2, which is the East Pike Office Furniture. But based on the recommendation of committee administration, be authorized to purchase office furniture to the East Pike Office at a approximate cost of $7,500. The Junior High Sound System is 7.3, but based on the recommendation of the committee, the following equipment be purchased to upgrade the Junior High Auditorium Sound System using both capital reserve funds and a $5,000 donation. And that would be for a soundboard and feedback eliminator at a cost of $4,161. Wireless microphones, $9,440. And a subwoofer for $3,605, for a total cost of $17,206. Subtract off the $5,000 donation and the $10,000 already budgeted for in the capital reserve. That leaves 2206 in additional capital reserve being requested. Then we'll move to 7.4. This is live streaming equipment for a junior high auditorium. Randy, you off the scroll off a little bit. That's based on the re- recommendation of the committee, the following equipment be purchased to allow for the live streaming of events at the junior high auditorium. The live streaming equipment is 6565. And the Telex headsets and packs are $3,048 for a total cost of $9,613. Did I have a second?
Second.
Uta made a second.
Okay, it was moved in second, um, by Uta. Um, are there any questions, comments, or discussion on 72, 73, or 74?
Walter, I'd just like to make a comment that, you know, very nice that, uh, a donation was made to help with this, uh, with 7.3 and 7.4, the upgrades.
Terry, hold on, hold on a minute. We're getting feedbacks. Let's turn our mics off. Go ahead, Terry.
All right, all right. I'd just like to say that, uh, provide accolades again to the donation that was made, the $5,000 donation from Dr. Jill Ehrman, uh, that, that, you know, helped with making this possible, the improvements to the, both to the junior high, uh, and, and I guess specifically to the senior high. And we're asking for little, very little money to make this happen. There was, like I said, money budgeted in the capital reserve for, for this. That's all my comments. Tom, do you have something?
Yeah, um, um, a- as you said, that, um, we had budgeted for this. Uh, the donation is an unexpected gift. Um, knocking down a tremendous amount of this. This is stuff that we, we, uh, certainly on the sound equipment, we have to do because we're violating FCC regulations. Um, then the streaming is, um, something that we probably hadn't anticipated two years ago that we'd be doing. I would also like to point out that the, um, Walter, turn your mic off. There we go. I'd also like to point out that, um, uh, we have allocated, uh, about $10,000, Terry, I believe, to the high school to do a similar thing with the sound system. I'm sorry, yeah, with the, with the, with the sound system that, um, uh, they should be coming back to your committee and we'll be doing this at the high school again also. So, um, I don't, we don't have any, we, we don't have any choice but to do, but to do this or be in violation of FCC regs. So this is something we knew about two years ago. Uh, we budgeted money for it, um, and having a $5,000 gift makes it a lot less painful.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to thank Dr. Ehrman for doing this. What a nice gift. What a very nice gift. So thank you.
Um, Walter, I think at some point we need to have a, um, motion to accept the gift. Um, it would be, would be board policy.
Absolutely, Tom. Um, um, you know, I'll ask, um, Mike or Jared to, um, put an appropriate, uh, motion for our next board meeting there, the first meeting in March, and we'll get that taken care of.
Well, Walter, I'll throw this out. Could we do a friendly amendment to, uh, 7.3 and then just take care of it now?
Well, Terry, we always can accept a motion from the floor by Robert's rules. Um, I would rather do this, um, as a separate motion for two reasons. Uh, number one is already been pointed out, uh, this is a very kind and generous offer, uh, by, by Jill Ehrman. Uh, for those of you who aren't familiar with Jill, I believe she was a teacher, principal, and I know for sure a curriculum coordinator in the district for many years. And, um, it is, you know, absolutely thrilling, uh, to see, uh, you know, a former employee give back, uh, give back to the district like this. So I'd want to make sure that it was given proper due order. Um, the second thing is, um, our policy on accepting these, um, um, on accepting these donations, uh, was because of some difficulties we had on a donation that was not properly annotated. And I think if we make it as a separate motion, um, it clearly, um, takes care of any confusion, um, that may occur. I think Tom had his hand up and then I believe Cindy has hers.
Um, I took my hand down, Walter. It'd be better if we did it in two weeks, um, with a, with a well-thought-out motion as opposed to trying to just, um, fly, uh, develop it in flight. So, uh, let Mike write the motion and then we cover all the bases.
Okay, thanks, uh, Tom. Cindy, you had your hand up.
Is there any requirement that we accept the money before we vote to spend it?
Not that I'm aware of, Cindy. And from a practical point of view, um, I would, uh, kind of guess that it would take this, maybe not something that you're going to pick up, you know, down at the grocery store tomorrow afternoon. So my guess is the two-week delay, um, probably won't affect the purchase of it.
Okay.
Uta, your mic is hot. Is there something you wanted to add?
No, sir, sorry.
I've been having a little trouble with my mic, uh, as, as well. Um, okay, um, um, based on Tom and Cindy's input, um, at this point in time, we'll go further into the administration to write the, um, write the motion and can we go ahead and vote then on 72, 73, and 74? Okay, not hearing any further discussion, questions, or comments. Again, we'll vote in the negative. Uh, if you oppose to any of these, uh, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard. The chair assumes that they all passed unanimously. Looks like we're down to Section 8 now. Julia, Audit and Finance.
Um, thank you, Mr. Schroed. We had a meeting tonight at the Audit and Finance Committee. Um, we discussed three things, the Aaron Budget, the, um, we discussed the LERTA program, um, from the borough of Indiana, and also we discussed the Tax Collector's Commission. Uh, we had varying results, so I've got a little bit to report. First of all, um, I'm sorry Barb isn't here tonight to talk about the Aaron Budget and at least, um, uh, give us her, um, feeling about it, but the committee agrees that it's a, it's a, actually a pleasant surprise this year because we're going to have about $80,000, um, overall on the $3.5 million general operating budget. There's going to be a slight decrease of a little under $100,000, which means, um, our share for that budget will come in at about, uh, Jared, it's $160,000. That's what we'll owe this year, correct? Next year? Yeah, I'm pretty sure. So I think it is $160,000, $159,051. That's what our share will be. Uh, so they've done a real, uh, a good job. They paid down a lot of their debt. I, we had a few questions about, um, how many non-problem schools they, they interact with. There's, they thought about six or seven, mostly religious schools. Uh, they also, um, they have long-term debt. They brought that down to about $250,000. And short-term debt is about, um, with retiree bonds at about 100, almost 200,000. But our share does not go towards their debt, which was my question. So what the committee recommends that we, uh, pass that budget tonight. Um, Ben Ford, who's Chair of the Borough Council Development Committee, came in and spoke to us about the LERTA program that he'd like to see initiated among our district, the county, and the borough, which is really a tax, um, I think that's the tax that they, uh, they call it a tax, um, exemption. I was going to say a payment, a tax exemption program. So that, um, you, you try to increase your tax base, um, for, if, if somebody wants to do, uh, starting at $10,000 in improvement, um, or development on their home or their parcel or even a vacant lot, there's a special treatment of taxes over a 10-year period. We decided we would like to speak to them, um, at a later date after we get some peer data about what similar, um, government entities of our sizes have done. So we'll probably be looking at that again this spring. Uh, we had a number of questions. There's some concerns because we're getting hit on all sides with the tax appeals. So we're, we're concerned a little bit, but we basically had a very good discussion about it. We did not come to any conclusions about the Tax Collector Commission. So we're going to have a special meeting on, um, we're going to advertise for an Art and Finance Committee meeting this coming Monday at 5 o'clock, where we're going to, um, look at some more data that Jared's going to, um, uh, get us hopefully in the next week. I don't know if we'll want to table that motion 8.3 tonight or if we just want to not have a second on it at this point so we can discuss it next week. And I did forget the payment in lieu of taxes agreement. The committee does recommend that we, um, uh, sign the agreement with the Indiana Regional Medical Center, um, Indiana Healthcare Care Properties as we have, um, as we've submitted. Jared, would you like to add anything to that before I start the, um, motions?
Um, I can add, we've, it has been probably a six-year process that the board, the school district, the county, um, have been working with the hospital to come to this agreement as some of their properties that were once taxable have now become tax exempt. And we have been working as a partner with IRMC. Um, they do not want to see the district or the county harmed by moving their, these taxable properties to tax exempt status. So we appreciate their ability and their willingness to work with us to come up with a compromise as, um, to meet us kind of in the middle so that we are not seen as a district or a county a complete loss in those tax revenues. Um, this also secures at least some type of revenue source for at least the next 10 years for the district and the county. So we, again, appreciate the hospital and working with us, um, on this agreement. Um, it's been a long time coming and we'll, we'll be glad to get it wrapped up here tonight.
Um, thank you, Jared. I guess my question, Walter, if you want to talk about a little bit, so on the Tax Collectors Commission, that motion's on. I mean, I think we have to make the motion and either it's not seconded or I can move to table it until the 8th. I believe it's the 8th. We would look at it again the 8th of March.
Um, Julia, Julia, you know, technically if you don't make the motion, even though it's on the agenda, then, then the motion's not made and it's okay. Um, you know, just to reiterate what you said in your, in your committee report, uh, there was some discussion on the, uh, Tax Collectors Commission. And, and I'm not sure that the, um, committee came to a strong consensus as to what, what to do. So, um, just, just don't make 8.3 and I think we'll be okay. Unless you want to make it and bring it to discussion, but if that's not the intent, then I, I just simply wouldn't make the motion.
I think we had a pretty thorough discussion about it at the committee meeting. Would anybody like me to make the motion to talk about it? Um, or I can explain a little bit right now. But we just couldn't come to a consensus. We're feeling the pressure of, you know, some of these, um, tax assessment appeals and whatnot from the commercial properties. So, you know, we're looking at a four-year program for the tax collector going forward. The urgency is that, um, for people to run for tax collector, the petitions are due to be filed on March 9th. So they're, they need to have some idea of what they're, what they would be earning for the next four years. And we're looking at, you know, exactly what we want to do. And Jared's going to set forth some different options, both with the county system that we now have and maybe without it. And then also, um, some questions about how the money is spent and, um, whether or not we're going to, uh, try to make any increases. So with that, I won't make the motion tonight, but I would like to move, I can't see now to the top, the first motion. Okay, so I, I, um, I would like to move, uh, number 8.2, the Aaron General Operating Budget. I'm going to read it so everybody understands what we're doing here. For the board's information, a copy of the proposed 2021, 22 Aaron General Operating Budget was provided to them. Uh, the district share of the budget is estimated $159,051. This represents no increase over the district share for the 2020, 21 school year. That based on the recommendation of this committee, the board of, uh, the Indiana Area School District, a member of the Aaron Intermediate Unit 28 approves the general operating budget of the intermediate unit for the fiscal year July 1st, 2021 through June 30, 2022 in the amount of $3,427,394.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Um, I too would like to thank the Aaron folks, uh, for coming. I too would like to thank the Aaron folks for coming and making a short present during the Finance Committee meeting. Are there any other questions, comments, or discussion on the Aaron Budget at this time? Please, please say so. Okay, nothing heard. Let's go ahead and vote in the chat room on 8.2. Okay, it looks like. I'm sorry, my mic screwed up again. Looks like it's unanimous for 8.2. Julia, you want to go to 8.4 then?
Yes, I move on number 8.4, that Payment in Lieu of Taxes Agreement. That based on the recommendation of the committee, the board approves the agreement with IRMC and Indiana Healthcare Properties for payment in lieu of taxes as submitted.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. And is there any discussion, questions, or further comments on, on this particular motion, 8.4? Nothing. Jared, would you do a roll call for us, please?
Yes, sir. Tammy Blank?
Yes.
Cindy Broad?
Yes.
Julia Tamarkey-Cucarrol?
Yes.
Tom Harley?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeper?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Throth?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks, Jared. Okay, it looks like we're down to item number nine, closing. Do we have any public comment on agenda items? Please say so now.
Hi, Mr. Throth. Chauncey Ross, Indiana. We noted for recent fact, the omitting the name of employees who would be forced to report for approval of medical and other personal leave with the understanding that without medical privacy can take precedent over public right to know, so that's understandable. In reference to item 6.5 tonight, what rationale goes to withholding names of employees who are taking sabbatical leave as that's often for professional development, sometimes pursuit of advanced degrees? Something that probably would be of interest to parents and residents to the district. And also on item 9.3, as usual, the executive session, there's a reference to confidential issue that seems to be pretty broad. Could you consider narrowing that down or shedding some light on what that issue might be? Thank you very much.
Okay, Chauncey, thank you. When we get down there, I'll defer to Mike to assist on both of those questions. We had enclosures, student activity report. We did have an executive session at 6:30 to discuss candidates for the positions listed on the agenda and confidential issue. Mike, can you answer Chauncey's, Chauncey's question on that?
Yeah, always. We know how much this world has been experiencing. Appreciate Chauncey reporting and questioning. It's pretty clear, though. The confidential issue is the IRMC agreement that the board acted upon. And the candidates for positions are listed for the vacancies that were listed above, which I believe are custodian and a paraprofessional. And lastly, to his question about, look, can we give a little bit more information regarding the sabbatical? Chauncey, as you know, there are educational sabbaticals, but there's also health sabbaticals. So at this point, we're not going to go through that detail and explain why someone took a health sabbatical. I think they have those rights protected underneath, I'm sorry, excuse me, HIPAA for them and we want to preserve that. So thank you for the modifications.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mike. We, our next board meeting will be March 8th. It'll be our regular meeting at 7:00 PM for general purposes. We have an academic committee meeting on March the 1st. Of course, academic's always a busy meeting. We also have Policy and Personnel at 5:30 on March the 8th. And can I have a motion now to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Barring any objection, the meeting is ended and we stand adjourned.
Okay, I have a question for Julia.